All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Tuesday, December sixth. At six oh four, the town should have a roll call.
Teresa A. Moss, yes?
Yes, Mark.
That's right, yeah. Chad Sexton, Iranian.
Long day. All right, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and sovereign.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town's YouTube channel. And it is live on channel nine. One point four chairman's additions or deletions. Uh, to the posted agenda, I would like to add um, under one point six, meeting minutes for seven thirteen twenty twenty two. And then also item two point two at six forty. Uh, we have a, a meeting with um, Sweet and Salty for the common bitterness license. So that was um, removed from the revised agenda, but the paperwork came in and we are meeting again. Most likely uh, for a regular meeting until June. So we want to pick up that. Uh, not an emergency, but an emergency. Alright, so um, have a comment. Is there any public comments?
Nothing from the floor?
Nothing from the floor, nothing from the, I assume, so um. We will move on to one point six, reviewing the meeting minutes for eleven twenty nine twenty twenty two. And seven thirteen twenty twenty two, and we'll take these um separately. So could we do uh, the meeting minutes for eleven twenty nine twenty twenty two first? Are there any comments on that beyond the fact that the, that extra last page, I can't get rid of it? So if anybody is able to get in there for the word, feel free to remove it, but um. Any comments on the minutes? This is last week's meeting. No, okay, so is there um, a motion to approve the minutes for eleven twenty nine twenty twenty two?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for eleven twenty nine twenty twenty two.
Second.
And uh, there's no other comments. Um Teresa, how do you vote?
Now, sorry, say my yes. Teresa A. Moss, yes?
Yes.
And Veronica, yes, I guess I could just say all in favor.
If you're all in favor, I'll vote.
Alright, um, and then the, the uh, next set of minutes is for seven thirteen twenty twenty two. This was the joint meeting with the water department and the board of health and the select boards. To discuss um, PFAS, um, to make sure we were all on the same page. Any? Further comments? I know that there were um, Sabrina had made two uh, updates to. Just mine or capitalization type of things, that sort of thing. Anything else to add or exchange? I don't think I have any. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for July thirteenth twenty twenty two?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for July thirteenth twenty twenty two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Teresa A. Moss, yes?
Yes.
Veronica, yes? So the minutes?
One good, thank you.
Do I have to wait two minutes?
No. I think, I think it's six ten.
You think it's six ten? Alright, we'll declare it six ten. Um, we have a meeting with the um, successor to assign the tax rate. So um, this is, that was posted as a public hearing. And we're not actually saying the tax rate, we're just saying we're having one, if we're gonna have a split rate or not.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's all we're doing is the split rate?
Okay.
We're not recommending split rate. So um, with that, I think that we need to have people sign in for the meeting.
Anybody who wants to speak.
Not anybody in attendance? We always did everybody in attendance. Alright, so only people who need to speak into some? In that case then, um, but yeah, I'll turn it over to you.
Some municipalities with large commercial industrial tax base often see fit to shift the tax burden to help maintain lower residential taxes. Given Townsend's small commercial and industrial base, it would take a large shift in the commercial industrial. Taxes to yield a modest residential tax reduction. To reduce the residential rate by only forty nine cents, the commercial industrial rate would be increased by six twelve. So we recommend a simple rate.
Can you give me that figure again, two, six dollars and twelve cents? I just didn't, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay.
Alright, so um, is there a motion to um, to adopt a residential shift factor of one? Is there a motion to adopt?
Can I ask?
Make the motion.
Make the motion and then we'll discuss.
Thank you. Um, I'll make a, a motion that we um. Set the residential rate with the shift factor of one.
Second.
Alright, now discussions.
I'm sorry, that's alright. So explain the termi- terminology to me, ship after.
Well, it just means that everybody's gonna be taxed, taxed at the same rate, each class of property, like personal property, commercial, industrial and residential. Where if you had a shift, residential would be taxed lower and the commercial would be taxed higher, highly.
So everybody's.
Everybody's just at the same, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Anybody from the floor? Alright, so I guess we're ready to vote then. Um, uh, all those in favor?
Teresa A. Moss, yes?
Yes.
I'm gonna pick out a yes. So with that.
Would you give me a fair, which time that pass that time, I'd upload that tonight so we can get our read approved.
Anywhere on it, you can sign. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, man.
Thank you. Alright, our next, um, so that's prepared, two point one. So our next um, hearing is not until six forty, so let's go on to appointments of officials. Um, the first is to discuss or and um. Discuss and or votes on the um, project manager for the water treatment plant. So with that, would you guys like to discuss who sounds?
So. Tom Lanson, Chair for the Water Commissions, um, the water treatment plant is uh, a dollar value, it's going to, to a certain point. Require what's called an OPM. Um. We have a couple options to do, um, I also have some more background to figure out um. This week upon some stuff, and I apologize, I was out of state taking care of something. Um. We can do it in-house, Dave is certified to do it, um. We would have to negotiate some things with um, the, the union still, um. But I need, I want some more clarification on um, from the state on it. Cause there were certain things that I thought that Mass Water Works had worked out between Water Trust and D E P on it. Um, but basically, if Dave does it, um. It saves us a lot of money, anywhere from four hundred thousand to six hundred thousand dollars. He's asked for some things in return, um, and my board needs to finish discussing that and come to. We do have a drop dead date, January fifth, that we need to have this done. So that the project can be submitted and the bids go out or.
Right, right, now the bids have gone out for the contractors and the subcontractors and the openings on the bid. And the OPM has to be in place for the bidding.
So if Dave doesn't do it, we have to put it out, um, one of the things I need to clarify is if we have to put it out for bid. I thought with the PFAS um, projects and the S R F money that was coming in from the federal government. Um, they got it included under thirty B exemption, I need to verify that or get that disproved. Cause Dave's got the paperwork, the regular paperwork does, OPM has to be put out to bid.
Well, it goes out to for qualifications, supposed to.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, just like.
But that takes, that takes thirty days, usually.
Well, we could. It, it would be possible if the board chose for us to. Put an RFQ together, and I don't think it needs to be for thirty days, I think we could do it for two weeks. Um, or three weeks and then have an opening, and the problem is, you know, we wouldn't get it posted until next week.
And you've got the, yeah, I don't.
And then we got two weeks, which means if we got posted next week, that's Wednesday, which would be the fourteenth. That means the twenty eighth would be the two weeks. That we would have, and, and, and then we could in theory open an award before, in theory. We could open an award before a drop dead date of the fifth.
January fifth.
We were supposed to have an OPM in place in May of twenty twenty nine.
And so.
I, I have been in that capacity since then, and because we didn't have the money.
At the time.
And I'm not even looking for a lot, I just.
Like you said, we, we.
Increase the stipend and that's it.
But we have to, you know, this company, my board has to vote that in, and then you have to approve it. Um, and then um. The union would have to agree to it. But.
I have two concerns.
Sure.
Um, one is um, amount of time, given that Dave is full-time water department supervisor. How do you also do this? Um, so that.
That's one concern.
Um, second concern um, is that it has to do with. When you're doing a project like this and it's all been internal. Is there an advantage to having outside oversight of the project? So that's my, my two um, two questions on it.
You wanna pick all the questions? Yeah, my, my biggest question is, is a kind of like along the same lines like that, like. Right now, it sounds sense, it makes sense, everything sounds good, but when you look at it. And let's say, something's wrong, something funny, right? Can, I need you to kinder address, like, are people are gonna say, just kind of answer all the questions at once, let's.
Well, let, let Chaz put in any other questions and maybe.
So I'm like, if there, my question is kind of like the same thing, is somebody gonna say back, like, why didn't they start looking and getting an OP?
Outside.
Right, on the side, so.
Um. I have more comments than questions, because I've been on board with the water department for two years now, so we've been talking about this for a little while.
Okay.
So, so I will answer a couple of your questions. There are a lot of water departments that do. I'm not looking for someone to re-engineer, I'm looking for someone to okay change orders. The monthly meetings and the S R F drawdown. I am not, I, I do, I, I've talked to too many superintendents. I have a lot of reach, and being on the committees that I have and being in it, the industry. Where I can reach out and talk to superintendents, there are some pluses and minuses of it. A lot of them don't agree with the full OPM, where you're having another engineer review. The engineering plants, um, time bonds build these plants, they um, they, they're not. Uh, um, new technologies, it's well versed, um. So I wouldn't, I, I, I just think it's a redundant, like I said. I'd like the change orders reviewed and make sure those are done properly, the S R F drawdown, and to attend the monthly meetings. That happens between the contractor, the engineer and that.
So, we're, we're mixing up the OPM with the engineer. The engineer firm is gonna hire an engineer, an engineer to be there in these eight hours, they, they. Five or six days, the OPM, so the engineer, when they make a change, or the contractor makes a change. Goes to the OPM, the OPM goes to me, I make a decision, or the board makes a decision, it goes back to the OPM. And back to the board, it's, an OPM is the go-between, between the engineer and the contractor, that's it. And whatever disputes or change order or anything, that's all they do, so. No matter what, I'm gonna be asked those questions regardless. And the only difference is, is you have to check over the, the payroll, then it comes in to make sure they're, they're compliant.
So, I see the role as an OPM, and I might be incorrectly, but I see the role as an OPM is three, three points. On time, on budget.
Yep.
I want to click up the third point, but those, those two are my first concern.
Right.
And, but basically on, you, you, your job is to review, make sure that the project is on time and on budget. Okay, but if it's internal, like, who's, are you overseeing? Like he reports to you and say?
He's gonna update on, 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 on my mind, um. I just, I've gone over this, I've gone back and forth on. Having um, a third-party OPM and doing it, and every time I look at it, I've changed my mind.
Is there, is there, I'm sorry, I didn't, I apologize, but is there like a, a middleweight? Like he could be the OPM, but there could be somebody that comes and say, you know, wait a minute, you're getting over budget here, like.
Well, so you have to understand, this is federal money, so there's going to be a lot of.
Oh, there is gonna be.
So this is, this is the money from the bill, pro, um, what do they call? Build Back American program where all the federal money came in, a lot of this is dedicated to PFAS treatment plants. Um, and there will be, since it's federal money, oversight on that, um, on time, as much as they can be.
It's not gonna be on time. As much as it can be, it is gonna be.
It's getting better.
It's getting.
Um, um, we're seeing a lot more companies, the biggest drawdown delay on things were the, the vessels.
Yeah.
Um, and watermen, um, we've kind of gotten around that part of it, um. It's all whether you have su- um, supply chain issues and that's, you know. But there were things written into those contracts that, um. For the engineering of it and the construction of it, there are penalties that they have to pay, so that I, I've seen them. So long as it's not a supply chain issue, um. I don't see there being too many of them, um, had more companies come on making these vessels now, so. Your pick and choose of the vessels are, is a lot um, deeper, um. I have worried about burnout on him, um. A lot of our other major projects are done. You have to keep in mind, he rebuilt the Highland storage tank and the control center there, the main street station. Um, getting rid of the two-ville well field and getting a well permitted and up and running. Um, the only other ones that are coming in are the generators, um, we took Cross Street and took it from an inactive well to an active well. So a lot of those sets are done, the main focus is primarily going to be on getting that treatment plant up and running, um. I think he's gonna be there regardless, um.
But, but in what role? You know, like, do we, do you need, if, if, when you say he's gonna be there regardless?
The, the last year and a half, I, I've been the OPM.
Let me let Eric.
So I just wanna, just, just, this is not about the specific projects, it's about my experience with OPMs in general, which is. Um, I worked on a couple of projects, a low, large projects that had owner's project managers, one was a thirty-three million dollar. Parking garage and one is the high school, which they're still doing now, um, they're ridiculously large project. Um, the best OPMs will um, act as that. Kind of regular interface between the contractors and the engineer and the owner. Such that it takes a burden off the owner, actually reduces the amount of time that that owner's need to be involved in the project. The one that we worked with, with the garage was exactly like that, it was phenomenal. He did a great job of making sure that, um, you know, that the, the contractors were doing the scheduling appropriately. And the little things that, um, the, the little things that make a project run well, an OPM can handle in such a way. That all the signatures get done right and the, and, and, and they're, they're done rapidly. And information flows well, and it actually reduces the burden on town staff. You could also have a bad OPM that makes you have to do things in redundancy. Kind of like, I think, what Dave is concerned about, which is, it's just gonna be an extra middle person that has to be involved in every process. That slows down the process, um, and so I, I, you know, I, I, I do think we need to think about. Um, um, uh, it's, cause it's not just about getting an OPM. We got one, we wanted to get one who was good, who would, who was, you know. Able to, to manage what their role would be in such a way that it actually takes a burden off of the water. Department staff. And makes Dave's job easier with respect to this plan and not harder, but that's definitely a role.
So there's, there's one slight difference, and where water is different from a lot of other projects is. A lot of times, the senior operator is involved in the day-to-day of these plants, because they're the ones who are gonna be running the valves. They're the ones who know which ones valves are better. Places I have worked or place I work, we entrusted to an OPM. And we're in the process probably of rebuilding it, because it wasn't, the operators were not involved in the day-to-day, so. Regardless of what we hope an OPM did not. He's gonna be involved in it to make sure that everything that we know as operators gets done correctly. Cause if you don't, if you trust that, they'll oversize it, they'll, um, they, they can oversize it, um. I would, you know, the, once it gets turned over to the contractor, the engineers on site, other things can get delivered. I've seen treatment plants that had pilot studies that dictated a very specific coagulant. What was delivered was in the same family, but not that specific coagulant, so I mean, I understand what you're saying about a school. In a parking garage and treatment plants a little bit there.
Sure, but wouldn't an OPM's role be to make sure that it's engineered as it's engineered? And if the engineering is gonna change, like the size of the valve or whatever, wouldn't that be something that? An OPM wouldn't do on their own, wouldn't they speak to the owner? As well as the engineer, as opposed to saying, okay, you need to make this plant change in the engineering plant. I don't see them making changes, and I see it if they think a change needs to be made. That's where the oversight piece comes in, that I feel would be an advantage.
I, I, I really don't wanna pay someone to be a second engineer, I, I. I've gone back and forth on this, um.
But that doesn't answer the question that I just asked.
So they're gonna, like I said, my vision of an OPM for our project would be a review change orders. Watch the S R F drawdown, make sure all that's done correctly, um, and the monthly meetings. Um, so, okay, a change order, so if something comes in, it needs to be changed, but I. These plans are getting made, the technology is not new technology, it's pretty standard technology. And I guess this is where I came down on it, um, is that. I really don't wanna see the community spend that much money for a second engineer, I really don't. Um. You know, you're talking, this isn't, you know, that sixteen million dollars, you're talking somewhere between four hundred and a hundred thousand dollars. And if we're talking about an OPM, I'm not gonna accept any OPM, it's gonna have to be a water-specific one, and so I. I don't know, I. I, I, I have issues on both of it, go ahead, Teresa.
Yeah, I, I can understand, I'm, I'm hearing everything that you're saying, I'm, 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 I'm solving it. The problem is, I worked the last twenty years of my life as a project manager, right, so.
But, but did you do it in water?
No, 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 that's what I'm saying, right, right, so, but no, this is, this, I'm, I'm just gonna, just, let me just put this out there, right? So I can see how this, how you get that, there, right? I, I, I truly can, okay? I'm just asking you face to face, you tell me honestly. I know, I work million-dollar projects, not a problem, the first two billion-dollar project, it overwhelmed me. So, if you tell me that you think with oversight and everything, like, this is a big project. This is big there than what you.
High School is the biggest project.
You know, I'm thinking that if you could have some type of assistance, some type of, may. Some type of.
But if we do that, I think we have to list it as an OPM, because I don't think you can. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if we set up a guy, a overview or an oversight person. Another engineering firm.
But I think you're telling me, or Chaz, you were telling me, that you're getting that from the federal government anyway, basically.
At least on the monetary part of it, they'll, they'll track to make sure that's being done.
I hate to say, but that's all I care about is money.
All you're gonna hear about.
There's two things with, with that, I've been acting as the OPM for the last eight evenings. You probably don't know how much I've got in that design, a lot of that design is mine, in that, in that building.
Well, I don't, I, I don't wanna personalize it, Dave, and I'm gonna jump in here and say something. Um, I, I see this as a broader issue, and the broad issue is, we're talking about water, but I also see this as a public safety issue as well.
Absolutely.
It's a health issue, there's a lot of factors involved, and. My personal opinion is, I want a water superintendent that's gonna take care of business while I have other people taking care of a fourteen million dollar project. That's where I'm coming from, okay? There's a lot of paperwork involved in a federal project like this, right? It's much more than, you know, just kind of overseeing this and once, once a month meeting, it's not. The invoice is coming in, any, any, any piece, any widget that pops onto property, we're gonna have to make sure it's logged, it's categorized, it's put in there. And ensured that it's put into the facility. I would much rather you be dealing with something on Highland Avenue than to, you know, count screws and, and bolts, that's my, that, I'm not finished. Alright, that's my concern, number one. Number two is, i- this is, this is beyond the, the personality thing, alright? I, I am looking at a major project for this town, historically, this town has made bad decisions in regards to large projects like this. Okay, I don't wanna make those, those decisions, uh, bad decisions on this, alright? I, I understand where we're coming from as far as the money is concerned, but most importantly is, this. This particular facility is going to be protecting our water supply in the town, right? So I want to ensure that it's built properly. Not saying that you can't do it, you as an individual or your position. But I would much rather have somebody be focused on the day to day business of keeping the the water department running. And let someone else handle that with a handoff with the commissioners um um and the superintendent.
Right, but you're seeing mixing the engineering. There's gonna be an engineer, the engineering company who is gonna be overseeing. Exactly what you just.
And I I understand that, but I I would I would feel comfortable having an outside company. Being able to oversee what they need to oversee to give a third party. Um, explanation of exactly what's going on in in any given thing.
Right.
And again, you're gonna be you're gonna be held in the loop. You're gonna be the one that's gonna be providing them information. But I would like to be able to 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 know that we have somebody in there that's gonna be able to 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 handle a project of this magnitude. This has no nothing personal. I don't want you to think that this is anything personal. I think we should have a a, you know, someone from the outside that has done this before for water departments, even though it is a lot of money. I think that's for public safety and for public health. I believe that that's the best way.
You need to get someone in here soon because I have. Next week I have, I'm gonna be have twenty to thirty hours overtime. In the next next week.
Um. Can we get it done?
That's a, I mean, that's the question is is.
Because we need it done by the best.
Yeah, so, I mean. There's a very tight timeline to get something turned around, even with the two week.
Even if we.
Even with the two week.
Let me see if we if the process at least started, whether it'll let us go through with that. Um, so I know we there's some phone calls to D E P to make tomorrow. Um.
If we talk to D E P and say that we have had somebody and this is what we're planning on doing. I'm pretty sure they'll be able to work with us in regards to that. The dead, the the drop dead date is for what now? Is is it for?
The bid opening.
The bid opening. We have to have one in there. So if i- if we can, I would ask if we could have. Um, you know, the the way the current structure is, knowing that we are gonna be changing our structure, is that? Would they be?
So I'm not sure if it's D E P or Clean Water Trust we need to call. So that would be the first is get clarification from. The person handling the S R F paperwork, which I believe is Patricia R. Um, make a phone call in that regard and see if that's the case.
We've been very proactive and ahead of the curve on everything that we've done and I I don't see why they would, they would.
It just gets sticky when you're dealing with the Clean Water Trust.
Agreed, agreed.
Yeah, so I mean, the I think the the main things we need to find out would be, number one. Is this process different than the regular O P M process? Is it is it something that's changed that allows us some other?
So if you can do it, you know, because I thought Mass Water was fighting to get. That included on the thirty P exemption, whether they did or not, I don't know.
You know, and that's.
Because all this, but there's a smaller community that's been one of the bigger sticking points.
Yeah.
Is is the money that's involved when you're talking about that.
Yeah, I I.
Mind though, when you when you're talking about safety and stuff like that too, D E P gets involved in this and they don't approve anything. That doesn't um. Meet health and safety. They're the ones that actually have more so than us, the final say so.
And and I agree with you. I'm saying what we have currently, our system, I wanna have that running smoothly and doing what it's doing and somebody devoted to taking care of our system while we're getting this built.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that part of it again.
Yes.
Um.
And so i- if we can, so the the other thing is, we have a meeting on the third. Either way, I mean, we we could say. We're gonna make a final determination as to who's gonna be the O P M of the project on the third. And hope that we can figure out if it's the same process or some different process. How to get through that process by that time.
What are we doing on the third? Determining whether or not we need.
Well, officially have known officially appointing an O O P M.
So I'm gonna do my due diligence tomorrow. Uh, I'm gonna contact them if we.
So.
Need to do the formal R F Q. Request for calls and we can, if it is included on the thirty P exemption. Um.
They'll make a quicker process and like less.
Oris.
Yeah, if we don't have to do that, but we might be able to do it even so, like we might. It's not, because it's not having to do with land, so we might be able to do an O P M request for two weeks. It's a short time period, but we might be able to get that turned around. Quick enough to know before the end of the month who has come in. It's just that if we have to follow that process. That gives us from the twenty eighth to the third to do interviews and reviews of the of the. Of all of the people that we that we get proposals from. And have that turned around. That's a that's a really, really, really short time for everyone, like holidays to get that turned around.
Now, would that be the board of commissioners that do that review? Yeah, right, so.
Well, I mean, I think we would, what we would probably do is say. You're gonna sign onto the review team. Dave would probably be on the review team and Todd would probably be on the review team and we'd get another person on the review team and those three people would be on the review team. To review the qualifications.
That's all right. Just help me understand this timeline, this drop dead date of January fifth. Is there a possibility, and I'm just throwing, you know, thinking outside the box, to say. At this point, you know, we put in all the paperwork, whatever we need January first and say we have interim, an interim. Uh, O P M, but we're researching somebody. A long term position so that it doesn't force us to finding somebody in such a short period of time.
And we can ask about the S R F.
Maybe talking about this. I I mean, that's a, sorry, but. Can I read this letter that Dave handed me at?
Louis Sorato.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, this came in today at eleven twenty four A M. And I got it right at the start of the meeting. Um, this is from Louis A. Sorato, who is with Tygen Bond. Senior Project Manager. Hi, David. As discussed, I'm sending the email concerning an O P M to Townsend. It is my understanding that the board may be considering a third party for this role. I don't know if he's talking about the Board of Selectmen.
Or the Water.
Or the Order of Water Commission. For a project that utilizes outside O P M services, we usually budget approximately three percent of the construction estimate. This could be over four hundred fifty thousand dollars on a sixteen million dollar program. There will be significant savings to utilizing yourself if possible. And is the reason why using an internal per- person is what most often do. It is my understanding we are now certified O P M and through the design process to date, it has worked well. Okay, now here is the date paragraph coming up. However, if the board is serious about bringing on a third party as an O P M at this stage. We may have scheduling issues. The W T P, what does that stand for?
Water Treatment Plant.
Water Treatment Plant Prequalification Process is underway. And packages are due January fifth, twenty twenty three. We are then planning to notify those that qualify by the end of January. And plan to post the bid documents by February sixteenth, twenty twenty three. This will provide the time we need to obtain bids by April sixth, twenty twenty three. So that the precise additional funds that will be needed can be secured at the May second, twenty twenty three town meeting. To secure the S R F loan principal forgiveness, a contract must be executed. With a contractor by June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Also, it is my understanding that an O P M may need to go through a selection process. When is the next board meeting or has the board already determined what will be done about the O P M? So my question is, and I'll pass this around, do you have to know who the O P M is?
I believe.
By January fifth, or you guys have it too? Or do you just have to um say that you are going to hire an outside O P M? Because of my reading of this, you don't have to name who it is. You just have to say.
You have to have the person in place, the bid opening.
Yeah.
For the bid, which is, okay, which would be April sixth.
No, that's the fifth of January.
The three months. January.
The.
And that's why.
Packages are due by January fifth, but the bids are, we need to obtain bids by April sixth.
That that's the bid opening for the qualification of the contractors and subcontractors. Gets opened. At the on the fifth.
No, it says the packages are due on the fifth.
It says the packages, it says the packages are due on the fifth.
Usually the openings are filled thereafter.
And to plan to to post the bid documents by February sixteenth. This will provide the time we need to obtain bids by April sixth.
Prequal is different than the bid documents. So prequal is you're prequalifying usually the the contractors.
So I agree with the chair that they're saying that you just need to say that you have somebody in place. It doesn't say that you have to name somebody. At least I am reading the same thing she is.
All right.
Which will.
Okay, so we have a, it's after six forty and we have a hearing.
Yeah, so the I I I I think. If the board is willing. To authorize me to um. Kind of. Pull on this string. And investigate the O P M, you know, the 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 the. The O P M process for this particular. Type of work and then um. Um. If necessary, put together a a a request for qualifications.
Is is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that the town administrator do further research on the um. Research on the O P M process and uh qualifications for O P M. For the project. Um. Which is the name, we have, we have.
Water.
Excuse me?
Water.
What uh the water treatment plant. Uh, can uh immediately considering the timelines placed in front of us.
Second with discussion.
All right, so um. Moved and seconded that you go forward with figuring out how to. Uh, bid the um O P M. But we're not meeting again, so.
Until the third.
Until the third and um. So I guess I I I. Are we, I guess we need to make a decision on whether we're going outside for an O P M or not.
Well, well, understanding that us going outside doesn't tie the hands of the us going through the R F Q process. Does not tie the hands of anyone as to who the ultimate O P M is.
Okay.
You go through that process and say, we decided we're gonna stay internal, actually this process, but I do think.
All right.
I do, I would like the 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 um, the authority to go forward with the process if it appears, though, it needs to be done by before our next. That it needs to start before the next meeting.
I think it's all nodding on that.
Yeah, I'm I'm not committing that we need to go outside at this point. I'm just saying that we need to look at it.
And then. Um. I'll work with Todd to figure out, you know, if there's some different process than the standard O P M process on this. There's no, I make sure that we're, that we know the date. We can touch, touch base with the engineers and know the exact date by which the O P M has to be in this. That's the fifth. Then that means we need to do something. If it's not the fifth, then we have, it's a different.
And when is that commissioners gonna be?
Next meeting.
Next meeting?
When is that?
Monday.
On the Monday, yeah, okay, next Monday.
Okay.
Can you make that?
I can certainly, yeah, I can do it.
Yeah, we do it some.
All right. Um, then any other comments before we vote? You have a motion in the floor? All right, so Teresa, how do you vote? Teresa and Wash, yes?
Jess Exandurian, yes.
And Veronica, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
They don't get to leave you out there. We have an appointment.
So um. So um. Renee, Renee, do you wanna come up here or?
Grab a chair.
Thank you. Um, so thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys. Uh, we have a um.
An application for a common business license for Sweet Insulting. And um. So I guess all we need to do is review and.
Yes.
Have we, I'm sorry, I'm lost. I thought we were on the appointment of the audit committee.
No, we went, I had to go back to two point two that was added, the comment that was on the agenda was added.
Yeah, okay, yeah, sorry, not paying enough attention.
Um, so the. The application was right here for a dolly style sandwich shop at two thirty seven Main Street here in Townsend. And um, looks like everything is in place. So um. We just need a motion to sign unless.
I make a motion that we um.
Grant.
Grant. A common fiddle license to Sweet Insulting.
There's seven.
Second.
Any further discussion, anything we'd like to add? I know it's going away, I hoped.
It is, I I.
I can recommend.
I've heard nothing but good things.
Nothing but good things. I've been there and had nothing but good food.
Thank you. All right, we should try dinner. We added dinner too.
Oh, okay.
Are you still going practice?
No, no, sadly practice.
Oh, no.
It's not making it for me. No, so we went the opposite direction. We stay open till six thirty now for dinner.
Oh, that's good.
My favorite was breakfast, though, was seeing the guys come in and picking up lunch to go.
Took a lot of that burgers at seven o'clock in the morning. It's always great for next year.
Hang on, are we voting Teresa and Wash, yeah?
Jess Exandurian, yes.
And Veronica, yes. So we need a signature. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All the best to your business.
Thank you.
Veronica, you added a twenty twenty three folder?
Whoa. That's a good ad.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
All right.
Um, all right, uh, so moving on to three point two. Um, the B O S appointment for the audit committee for a term to expire in December twenty twenty three. Um, we also have the uh audit committee um. Rep from the FinCom, we appointed Don Hayes. And did anybody check with Dave Chanel to see if he was still interested in being on the audit? No, so we should do that and um. And get that on our uh January. Uh, third appointment if if he is so interested, otherwise we need to um. For the posting, yeah. All right, so. Uh, we need a selectman representative to the audit committee. This is a December to December appointment. Uh, where we are is that um Roselli and Associates is our auditor for. F Y twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. That's been assigned already. The contract is in place. So the um, you can read the um audit committee. Uh. Um. In the select board policies, you know, you can look at that, but it's to interface with them. Um, to see that the audit gets started, which really needs to be done now. Um, and and then to interface with them in the spring when the audit is complete. And presented to the FinCom and the B O S. Or select board as the case may be. Um, so. Who would like to be on the audit committee?
I think maybe I'm not a liaison, but as I'm the liaison to the FinCom, I think it's a logical. Part of it, so I would volunteer, but I don't know if that makes sense, so.
I yield on last year before you were elected.
So I'll yield to anybody who wants to jump out and help me.
So I move that we have.
Wow.
Right on it.
On the audit committee to uh a term to expire December twenty twenty three.
Um, and I would second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor? No. Alright. Are you a yes, Teresa?
Yes, I.
Alright.
Been being a little heavy.
Alright, so that's three point two and three point three is there a motion to appoint Don Hayes as the FinCom representative to be a audit committee?
I make a motion that we appoint Don Hayes to the FinCom of the audit committee.
For a term to expire December twenty twenty three.
To term to expire December twenty twenty three.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes?
Jess X. Duranian.
Okay, so we just need to get our at large member, our community member appointed. So let's hopefully do that generally. Okay, um.
Can I just ask a question about that? The at lab might remember can't be a member of the FinCom committee as well, right?
It shouldn't be.
It should be, okay, um, we looked for someone that had um financial auditing um experience.
Okay.
And uh Dave was the person.
Oh, we already have.
It was, well, he was.
We're gonna, we want to do again.
But it needs to re.
Okay.
Just don't ask him, just important, let him know.
Do we vote tonight without him knowing?
Good, I mean, I love Martha, thanks.
At least warn him, I don't know.
I'll give him a chance to say no.
Is there a motion to appoint Dave Chanel? Alright, four point one, um, the bond anticipation note for the water treatment plant engineering, so that came back. And um.
You guys should have the all the documents, right?
Is it in SharePoint?
Uh, it, I'm pretty sure I looked at it in SharePoint earlier.
And we move, like it moves.
I I'm almost positive I looked at it in SharePoint, I'm looking at them here hard copy and I know I've seen this before on the screen.
Yeah.
So it had to be in SharePoint.
It came through his correspondence, so I think Sabrina moved it to. Into the appropriate folder.
And two four. Yes.
And so um.
Four one.
We are, um, the motion is to accept the um. I don't know the right words to say, the bid or whatever the.
Except the bid for the ban.
For the ban, um, and and that is from Leader Bank, is that correct?
I believe that was the low.
Yes, that is a low bid. So.
Yes, um. If you wanna have the motion, then I can make some comments.
That would be good, so is there a motion um to accept the. Uh. Bond anticipation note for the water treatment plant engineering. Uh. With Leader Bank or through Leader Bank, so.
Second.
And discussion.
Um, so I just wanted to, I I know when this first came up, um, there's some questions. That I wanted to clear for the board and David and I talked about this extensively and I talked about it with Todd extensively, so I just wanted to clear up. Some of the questions I think the board had the last time this came forward. Um. Uh, so. The way that the timing regarding the water treatment plant has worked for purchases of financing is this. Um, there was originally a hundred and thirty thousand dollars or put aside from ARPA. Um, for the water treatment plant, um, that was used for the media study in the land survey. That was required before the the S R F loan application process was started. So that those funds were expended plus funds from the the water department, about seventy five thousand dollars. Was put together, um, uh, so that was the initial, that initial uh ARPA allotment. That was not about the engineering, so the engineering um for the treatment plant, uh, it, that part of it is not. As I think we discussed it very briefly last time, part of it is not um eligible for uh the the S R F loan. Um, so we have to go out and get that separately, the funds that are not S R F eligible. Um, so the the ban that's being put out now. Uh, is for the engineering for the water treatment plant that is not eligible for the S R F loan. However, the only, the only um uh it that financing was included as part of the vote for the fourteen point nine million dollars in town meeting. In May, that included both the S R F loan.
And.
And engineering on top there. So um, so this is not a zero interest, unfortunately.
But the rest of it is.
The 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 stuff that's eligible for the S R F loan will be a zero of interest law, yes, just this, this is not, because there's certain parts of engineering, I think we've discussed in the past. Just aren't eligible if there's certain project costs for for that, so um. So it does, the the reference that you see in any of the documents to the fourteen point nine is because that was the vote. At town meeting that authorized the entirety of the borrowing. But this is the only portion of the borrowing that I think we anticipate being outside of the S R F pro- process.
Yeah, the the engineering is not S R F, um, that was another thing that's why we're trying to get included. It is not, it's not eligible for S R F disperse dispersment, so. Just this portion of the engineering.
Yeah, right. There are other portions that are.
It's the pre-engineering is basically what they call it, yeah.
And so. I actually think, I mean, I I think we actually got a pretty good rate. I think we actually got a, you know, a a decent rate during where interest rates are going now, and so.
Four point eight five.
Well, yeah, four point five, four point five.
And I actually think, take Kramer Hamrod, Dave, is this less than it was the last time it came in front of the board? So the board's delay actually saved the town a little bit money.
And in this one will only be till. April. And. There's a ban loan for the water line that they put in three years ago that comes due. So those two, the fire trucking and the ambulance will all be put into one.
One larger, long term note, this will be at a lower rate, so.
We'll bring that rate down.
Okay.
So this this comparison is you have Leader Bank at four point five and you have Unibank at four point eight five, that's why I said that, so we're going with Leader.
Leader Bank, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and so Unibank was the only one who bid in the first round.
Yeah.
Did this one out, so um. I would, you know, recommend that we accept the ban and move forward, I think we, I don't have a lot of choice at this point, but. I just wanted to give those explanations.
Let's get moving on this.
So anybody have any other? Questions or comments? Then we're ready for a vote. All those in favor?
I think it probably needs to be a roll call, because it's.
Yeah. So Teresa, how do you vote? Teresa A. Marsh, yes?
Jess X. Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Dalian, yes. Right, and we have signatures, so I don't need that. So I'm gonna pass this around right now. There's three places.
Do you have to do in black? Blacking?
Uh, I think it's blue, but I'm signing in black.
It I I don't think it matters.
It's state grants, it's safe room.
Yeah, yeah, this is. Thanks for taking your signature on anything.
Of course they will.
Yeah, they'll they'll hold.
Invisible ink, they won't, though, I tried.
If you want objects, I'm popping our hints.
Um.
Because that came in today as well.
Yeah, that's the. I knew that I can't, I think that's that's the one that you made, that's the one that came in like right before the meeting started.
Right, exactly.
So I do have that, that's a.
And everybody else has that as well.
Everyone should have a copy of it.
Three places.
I get to practice my segments.
Yeah, important checker. Should use my stamp on.
So none of this has changed, you just explained the pillars from what we saw last time.
Cover the rate that went down.
Oh, that's right. I'm glad we had questions.
Yeah, so there you go, sometimes the lane. As you run, sometimes it's.
It's the opposite with the electricity as well.
So.
Alright, are we all all done?
Well done, well done with the ban.
Alright, so moving on to four point two. And we we will have you guys on our um. And do we need to send letters to a butters for that meeting? Or no?
Nothing we're doing requires um a waiver or anything like that, so.
But should they be notified if they want to see what the treatment plan?
So what we're planning on doing, we're gonna make a decision hopefully at our next meeting, is to to do a public. Presentation on the water treatment plant.
Separate from what's coming to us on.
Correct, similar to what, probably more put together in a PowerPoint presentation and a lot of people ask questions, but the idea was sometime January, February. To have a meeting for the public to look and see what we're talking about. But we don't have to notify butters because we're not doing any that requires a um.
Special permit?
Right, there's no statutory requirement for.
Correct.
Oh, right, okay.
There is a.
It's just courtesy, I guess. Um, alright. That's all, okay, thank you. Alright, so um. Four point two is to um discuss and take any votes on the man pedestrian bridge proposals, we just want to put greenways. That's what Greenways have presented to us at our last meeting. Um, so um. If we wanna talk first, or if we want motions first?
I think it, I think it's, we should probably celebrate a discussion about what we're.
Why we're here today.
Why we're here.
So hopefully everybody had time to review what Bill had given us last time.
Yeah.
And um. So I guess are there any um questions, I, before we go there, I should also say that we got um. From Cat Hickory this afternoon, at Cat Hickory Fish and Wildlife. Um, the letter that was sent on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. To um, I think the Conservation Commission regarding this after the presentation that had been done. The summer of twenty twenty. So um, and I I think this is just stuff that can be reviewed probably by an engineer. Um. Uh, prior, depending on our votes. On going forward.
Correct, Stan has actually been working efficient wildlife very um. Intensely before we decided this should be a town project on that side of a river.
Okay.
He's had a lot of contact. So now, you know, when the permitting is not done, we're just saying to the town. If you take over the project, we will pay for all the permitting work that needs to be done and we will pay for the construction for the lowest bidder.
Okay, so that that gets into my question, then when you say the town. Takes over the project, what does that mean, we drive the project? Or does Guanaco Greenways need any? Uh, because I I have two motions prepared here.
So what I thought, the way I thought it would go, and I talked to James Smith about this, is that he would take the lead, but anything he needed done, we would do. Um, and so he could just be the figurehead signing off the. Things or costs for permitting would be covered by us. And all costs for construction would be coming, coming, coming from us.
So who would be presenting before Conservation, et cetera?
Our.
For the permitting.
Open to all these standbills.
So do we need to assign Stan as similar to what we did for Guanaco Meadows? Do we have to assign Stan as the town's? Point person for. Um. Permitting.
I I think what we need to do is just authorize Stan to. To submit documentation on behalf of the of the town.
Right, because we will be covering his his fees.
But.
But he has to sign, he'll need. Signature from the town.
Um, right, but I know that when we did the um. That's a little different. We, when we did the addition to the senior center, we signed it over because he will. You know, because that was out of our hands for the Guanaco Meadows, the person doing the permitting and presenting. Is only fine, and so we authorized her to represent us. So this would be the same thing to authorize.
We would authorize authorize Stan to to represent the town. Is that what you're saying?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Is that the correct word?
I think that's, I think you definitely do it that way, yes.
Alright. Um, then maybe it becomes easier than what I thought, one, a single motion. Can probably do it. Um, if we're gonna. Let's talk more.
I'm only asking this question because it would estimate currently the way the project is run, if an emergency situation, if somebody. Like me that gets out there and has a heart attack, uh, you can access. On that person through that vehicle road, even though vehicles aren't allowed on that.
Correct.
How does this affect that?
It would make the road of higher quality, so you'd actually be able to travel at higher speed to the bridge from either side.
But you couldn't use the bridge, right, the weak.
You.
Not for a vehicle.
Uh, if you have an all terrain vehicle, there will be a baller there that is removable by emergency personnel.
Oh, it is, okay, that that answers it.
And I put that into the document.
It isn't, I didn't see it, okay.
For the police chief.
Somebody just wrangled me in the grocery store.
Baller.
Oh, that's what that is.
It's it's a rail trail word, so I know that.
Yeah.
But yeah, so the the police chief asked for that to be put in there, so what we will do is have no bigger than a forty inch gap, which is. Less wide than a typical, all the different sizes of A T Ds, um, so.
That's still A D A implied.
That's still A D A implied, right? So this is, you know, uh, you know, I don't know the width yet, so I don't know if it's the margin. I mean, the side, but both will be removable by the emergency personnel and scanner teams. Yeah, we walk the, walk the fire chief and the police chief about this issue.
Yeah, somebody actually really came up and had.
Yeah.
That's pictured in, I didn't follow the picture.
I I I wanted to let the board know that I did have a a um. Uh, a resident call today with concerns about the project. Um, I think with the same concerns that were raised at the Conservation Commission meeting last year. About the projects, concerns about increased use of the trail impacting the um. Uh, the endangered species habitat and um people uh having dogs off leashes and endangering, you know. Potentially endangering the the um, uh, the uh. The ecosystem there around the. The the uh, those endangered species, so. And I did indicate to that person that there would be um opportunities for them to speak. If they wanted to, they can speak here tonight, or they could speak at the any kind of future Conservation Commission hearings, but.
Right, and I I believe that throughout this whole project that's been years and years and years, there's been ample opportunity for those to. To be able to to speak out in that respect. Um, but this was a road at one time, too.
Right.
I mean, it wasn't like we're we're building through through virgin forests here. Um.
It does increase probably the number of people that go there, but people can go there now.
Yeah, it's still, it's not.
You know, so.
The pictures that we see, even in the winter, they're they're driving vehicles on that road.
That's right.
It's, it's.
It's not like it's unused.
You're not paving landing trails wet.
Yes.
That's an endangered species, I can't remember that.
I've seen one of those.
It's not someone that wants to talk right now.
They're very small.
I, I think for. Yes, I like the last sentence. It's a unique opportunity to make our town a better place to live without needing any additional towns.
Yep.
And it increases the use, well, it increases the accessibility. Who knows if it will increase the use? That depends on you know, what happens in the future, and has the potential to allow access to the rail trail, which then allows access to the entire town, either pedestrian or bicycle.
Yeah, well, I believe it also provides a safer route for those on that side of town. Being from that side of town.
For walking, you mean?
For walking.
Oh, yeah, for accessing.
Yes, all of that.
I mean, so getting completely covered in snow, so I can do some cross-country skiing.
Right across the bridge.
I mean, as, you know, just as a longer-term thing, we had this nice project in the South Street 119 intersection where we're trying to improve things for bicyclists that way, because people will be going that way to go to Harbor Church, I mean Harbor Village from differently. So we've worked a lot of that, and we definitely plan to do that same thing at the intersection there of where the Old Meeting House Road comes into the curved South Harbor and the South Row Road.
Yeah, we'll need to.
It will, we'll need to do that kind of work. But I mean, without a bridge, it doesn't make sense to do that.
And hopefully, too, we'll get the sunblock along 119. So anyway. Any further comments, questions, thoughts?
I'm assuming we move forward with the role.
I just want to set, just from Pat's letter, the things that I saw on this is we have reviewed the submitted materials and have determined that additional information is required in order for them to continue their review. So you're saying that Stan has been working with them on this?
Right, we do not claim that is permitting is completely.
This is all part of the permitting process.
Exactly right.
And will, you know, so this doesn't affect the decision.
Effectively, it's two projects now. We'll be helping the, you know, we'll be assisting the town doing the northern part up to the bridge. And then the bridge and the southern part of the road will be purely squonacook greenways running the project, because I'm not asking the town to take over the construction of the bridge or anything like that. That's, so I'm only asking the town.
Still need to have the two.
Okay, so yeah, we do need my two. I have two two things here, two motions. Should I go over the motions before we?
Yeah, because there's north of the bridge. Which is where we, the town needs to take over.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
There's the bridge and south.
And, and where, and Stan is representing the town only in the southern part, correct?
Well, he's represented the town only in the northern part, yes.
Only in the northern part.
Right.
In the south, we're just authorizing Squanacook Meadows Greenways to go forward with the project on town property.
Then we need a form filled out, don't we? I believe we do. Because we, it's what we have to do for the, if. Okay, let me go over my two motions here, and then we can get more specific. So my first first motion I was gonna request was a motion to improve Old Meeting House Road from where the pavement and south of Route 119 down to the base of the proposed pedestrian bridge. And then I.
I'd authorize Stan Dillis to be our representative in that.
Do we need to or not, from what you're saying?
Yes, yes. Yes, so Stan will still be doing permitting in that area also.
Okay, and authorize Stan Dillis to represent the town. So that's the first motion, motion to improve Old Meeting House Road from where the pavement and south of Route 119 down to the base of the proposed pedestrian bridge and authorize Stan Dillis to represent the town. Is there a motion? And saying someone's.
So, we don't need the second, we're not doing computer contrast here.
The second motion is about a completely different segment of the project. It's not alternative, no, 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 it's not alternative. Motion shopping.
I got that looked down.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, so Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa, you want to share?
Jess, six, ten, rainy, yes.
All right, so that's motion one. Motion two. I've changed it several times now, so I'm not exactly sure. Motion to permit Squanacook Greenways to improve the road south of the river on Old Nut. I don't have the pedestrian bridge.
To reconstruct the pedestrian.
Saying Squanacook Greenways, the representatives of the town for construction south of the river on Old Meeting House Road. Is that what we want, or is that not what we want?
Man, I'm terrified, if I might, I think the
Feel free.
The motion should say something along the lines of a motion to authorize Squanacook Greenways to reconstruct the pedestrian bridge across the Squanacook River.
And reconstruct.
I think construct, because it wasn't a pedestrian bridge for.
And improve the Old Meeting House Road south of the pedestrian bridge until the current pavement.
I have authorized Squanacook Greenways to construct the pedestrian bridge on the Squanacook River and Old Meeting House Road and improve the pavement.
And improve Old Meeting House Road south of the river up into the paved, currently paved portion.
Yeah, because we won't be paving.
Okay, south of the river. Up to the existing pavement.
This is a complicated dichotomy of.
Okay, so taking that, this is motion two. All right, so is there a motion to authorize Squanacook Greenways to construct the pedestrian bridge on the Squanacook River at Old Meeting House Road and improve Old Meeting House Road south of the river up to the existing pavement?
So much.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa, you want to share?
Jess, six, ten, rainy.
Very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask you, can I use James as my main, who should I use for my main point of contact? Eric James?
So I think because James is the chair of the Conservation Commission that has jurisdiction.
No, no.
Gate, yeah, that was like.
Different gates, no highway guy.
Um, I think going through Jim is probably appropriate, and if, but let him know if he has any questions, just refer it to me.
Okay, I mean, I have talked with willingness to do it, he hasn't, he would.
Yeah, I mean, I think that he's probably if we're thinking about actual, you know, like means and methods and putting things on the ground, he's gonna be a much better person to talk to right now.
And really, basically, I just want Stan to say, here's our plans, is this good with you?
Yeah.
You know, that's the kind of interaction I think.
Yeah, I think that would be it, Jimmy.
Very good, thanks.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in a second time. All right, moving on to 4.3. Discussion and vote, the job description and posting for the combined land use coordinator and brand administrative positions. Can I ask questions? I have questions for you. All right. Where does it say? I was looking for a 40-hour week, since we've increased this position from 35 to 40.
Right, so I don't think that, so in my opinion, that should not be put into the job description. Because if we ever wanted to change it, we'd have to negotiate with the union.
Okay. All right.
But there's nothing that prevents us from making it, I mean, we will be advertising it at the 40-hour-a-week position and be hiring someone else for 40 hours.
Okay, and so I am, I did not compare this to the old one, but I'm assuming it's the nine last bullets.
Yeah, I didn't do any kind of creative intermingling. I just added, I added.
To the, I did, and he did.
All right, I would have, the last bullet, when it says manages program files and records, my question was what program? So I am assuming, I would kind of like to add the word manages grant program files and records, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would add the word grant there, that's all. And then under education and experience, again, I'd have to pull up the old job.
But this is, I didn't change anything about education and experience.
That's, okay, I was wondering if we wanted to put in master's degree or not, is it covered with the three to five years as well as an experience or any equivalent combination?
I think that that's covered, and again, given our the challenge we've had with getting applicants, I wouldn't want to throw any other mandatory hurdles in there. Obviously, that's something I'd be looking for, but.
100% agree with that as well.
Any other questions on the the listing here? So we did have one applicant come in. Did we have status on that?
I'm still trying to arrange it. After talking with Jess and Beth and I think, I think it's gonna, we're gonna try to do it on Monday.
Okay, all right, and I was wondering then if we approve this, if that person will see this.
Yes, because if you approve this tonight, I want to take it to the union tomorrow and hopefully get them to sign off on it. They already got it coming.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't want to do it until you guys seen it, and then once it's official, that will, I'll change the, what's on the website and make sure this person got, they already, they knew that this was coming. Because I corresponded with them.
Okay, all right, good.
With the grant, there was some additional that would be sent.
All right, so is there a motion to accept the land use coordinator position as amended? So much.
Second.
Any further discussion? Others in favor?
Peter, you want to share?
Jess, six, ten, rainy, yes.
So my goal will be to get that approved by the union ASAP.
All right, next one is the school lease, the Spalding School lease.
Put a copy of that in the in the SharePoint.
That's where I got it from, anyway. I had a couple questions. Under number two, this is a, I think it should be instead of confirm, conform, all repairs and improvements must conform with the town of Townsend Bible?
Yes, that should say conform.
Okay, so that word needs changed.
That paragraph is not one that I touched, so, but.
Yeah, I'm sure it came from, yeah.
It came from.
And number three, what's an example of something that would be removed? Are we talking about vacuum cleaners? If they were to vacate the building?
Air exchangers, air handlers, anything.
I thought those stay.
Yeah, maybe like smart boards or.
Equipment, equipment.
Yeah.
Okay. That wouldn't stay with the school? I guess it would be the property of the district.
The district is generally speaking, that sort of technology that's unplugable. You know, it's the, you know, that generally goes with the district.
But where does the district go? Anyway, never mind, never mind.
That would only, that would only happen if for some reason the Squanacook River needed this school. And I can't envision that being palatable while Townsend remains in the district, so I'm I'm not really concerned about that unless in 40 years, it just becomes like Ashby Elementary, and it's no longer tenable as a building where they're willing to be in. But they want to vacate it and say, we can't be in the school anymore. But that's not something that, that's, I can't imagine as something that would be relevant during this lease period.
Okay, my next question came under number seven. I was curious about costs, so and so this is on the last page, just up from number eight. The four lines, this is for the summer rec program. So if the, if for some reason Spalding School is unavailable, they will make another at, you know, space available for the rec program at no cost to the lesser, which is us, correct? We are the lesser. All right, so what is the cost to the lesser for the summer program?
We're putting it there, we're putting it there as something that we are reserving the right to do.
So reserves the right to use the Spalding School facilities for the Townsend Summer Rec Program implies that it is at no cost. So my question was, is this at no cost or at a reasonable?
I can make it clear that it's at no cost.
I would kind of like that spelled out.
Me too.
Yeah, that's reasonable. Generally speaking, if you're, if you're the lesser, reserving the right to do something on your own land, there's not a cost, but I could certainly make it not implied.
I couldn't, I was reading and trying to figure out whether.
That states that they can't be charged.
No cost.
Right.
Gotcha.
Whether this at no cost to the lesser in the fourth to the last line, applied for both programs or only if we have to vacate.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, the idea about the, putting in the second half was because we're going to facility that isn't ours.
Right.
You can't charge us for it.
Okay.
But I could, that's not a big deal, just put it there at no cost, that's a personal reason.
Okay, all right, I didn't know if it was implied or not, and I know that as the years go on and the people change
Sure.
that if it's not spelled out, it's not always, there were different interpretations, so. That's, that's all I had. Go ahead.
Covered what I had.
So the only concern that I had is previously the school was available to many other programs in the town of Townsend. There was a senior basketball league that had basketball games at no fee. There was a pickup game for adult basketball players in the gym. There was
Girls' jobs?
That senior baseball league that also the use for those fields.
Well, that's taken out of this lease, so that the baseball field would still be available for them.
But the internal of the building, other than our reservation is, you know, it's gonna be under control of the school.
There was also a women's group that met there. They used to meet in the school, so.
You're absolutely right.
I think there's, I'm a little concerned in letting this just to summer recreation, but I don't know how we correct that.
Well, it would be in the slates that we correct it. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what made it that we couldn't use the school?
9/11?
So I think
Maybe.
I think that, that as everyone's budgets have gotten tighter, there's two things from the school end that affect this. Number one is their actual costs. They're the ones who are paying electricity, they're the ones who are paying the heat. They're, they're the ones that are paying for a janitor.
My, the janitor was there, and that was, they were saying the heat and the electricity has to be on because he's only gonna be in. My daughter worked as a janitorial assistant. She only could work on Saturdays, so they were gonna be in there anyway, so the men's pickup game on the Saturday, which was very popular, was they, they were having the electricity and the heat on anyway, so.
The second one is revenue, which is the school department, like every, like us, like
But we're the ones.
Well.
And they're not getting any revenue. And they're not getting any revenue from it, cause it went away.
Oh, uh, now, I agree with you on that, that they're killing the, like, they're, if they expect it to be a revenue source. They're driving people away by raising the rates, I agree with that, but that's a, that's a policy question on their, their end. As to where their balance is between like charging and not charging. Um, but, but I do think that they would say. The people who use the facility should be the ones who are paying for the facility. And if you have a group that's coming in using it, they should be helping to pay for it, they get special use, instead of. As we know, what happens if the, if, if they don't get that, is they will just ask for that mon- that money to cover their budgets from the towns. And that means everybody in the town has to pay for it. So.
It should be at a non-prohibitive cost. Um, I mean, we can't use, I, we can't use the, the, um, track at the. High school, I used to run there all the time, my kids had their little bikey things that they went around the track while I ran.
Right.
Um, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
Um, we can't do that anymore. It's like the schools are not, no longer part of the town.
I certainly appreciate that, now, I, I know that, I've told you before that they have a specific reason for why people can't use the track.
I, I know that, but that should change at some point. Um, even if you have to put up a snow fence around the. Field, so that people don't walk in there and put up threatening signs and, you know, booby traps, I don't know, but.
I think they're much more concerned about people walking in with food and spilling their drink, or having their dog. Go on the field than.
Yeah, but all of those things can be controlled, we, we've taken a community that I've lived in for over forty years. Where you could go into the school on a Saturday. Your husband played basketball and you meet other members of the community. And you and your kids like made stupid little crafts together, excuse me, the word stupid, but, you know. And that was available, it was always a place to go. And I know that part of it is that they say, well, this, the senior center. But it's not the same, it's not, we've lost that sense of community with the shutdown of our school.
It's almost like we now need a, um. Community center with a gym and a basketball court and a swimming.
When we pay that much for schools, why, it's making no sense.
Right, but, but the question is, is that something that? We, or you, as the Board of Selection, should try to tackle? In this document, or is this something that the community needs to go to the school committee? And have the school committee tell the administration that they can't do this?
Having said that, that's exactly where I lie on this, is it our responsibility to do this? Or is it the townspeople's responsibility to speak to the school district in regards to the issues that you're bringing up? Cause I believe, I mean, as far as our, our municipal form of government is, if you have something that is not correct. Then it needs to be brought to the school board, because the school board is the one technically who's leasing these buildings out. So if they can't have the, the, the girl scouts or the cub scouts, then the, the, the. Owner of the organization or the run, or the manager of the organization is the one that needs to bring it up to the school committee, I don't think it's our responsibility to do that. You know, I personally am, am, because I am the liaison to the, to the rec department. I unfortunately have come to bat for them for two years, because they just need space for their summer program.
And that is in here.
Correct, and that's why it's in here, is, is because of that.
And I'm glad it's in here, but do we want to have other uses specified?
Right.
In here, because this is the only school building that we have any, we, the Board of Selectmen, have any. Means of. Th- this is our only voice.
Yeah, so the, the.
But I, I'm kinda confused, and I'm always confused, but. Like you understood how you needed to be the voice for the rec department. Like, where are we having to be the voice for the basketball players or the? Girl Scouts or the Boy Scouts, I think, just like you were the voice for the rec department, I think we as selectmen need to be the voice for the other men of, members of the community.
Part of the town, the town is the one having the lease agreement. Much different than the basketball, that's not part of the town, that's not a town function, it's not a town department, the rec.
Oh, I, I, I see how you did one here, okay.
I mean, so I will throw that, if I could just make a very brief point, which is. You know, if the board wanted to. I could see us putting a, maybe trying to put a clause in that says something along the lines of. The, the, you know, if, if this school district wishes, wishes to lease out this facility to a third party. That they, you know, that the, the Board of Selectmen shall be, you know, um. And any changes in rates to rent out the thing shall be, uh, uh, you know, brought before the Board of Selectmen for approval, or something like that. The, the problem that gets into is.
Control.
Yeah, I mean. It's a tough. Like, th- there are. I think that there are legitimate reasons why. The school district. Wants to charge some folks money to do things.
I think it's okay to charge money for these things, if you do it in a reasonable way.
So how about something along the lines that, when, when possible. Uh, nonprofit Townsend. Um, whatever, Townsend, uh. Uh, potties, right, such as boy scout, girl scout, basketball, this, that, and whatever. Should be given the option to rent the, the school at reasonable rates. Or even limit it to the gym.
I just don't believe that if we're leasing a building out, that we need to tell them how they can run their building, I just don't think that's right. You see what I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not opposed to what you're saying, cause I agree.
Yeah.
You know, but I also see another side of it, and I.
And what is that other side?
The other side of it is, I've been in, in groups that, for, for instance, Color Guard. We had to rent out the gymnasium and we have to rent out the, the men's room and the ladies' room to be able to use it. And we negotiated the cost for, to use that facility from this time to this time. We had to pay for the, the janitor, we had to pay for our portion of the electric.
More people, you have to pay for.
Exactly, and we had to hire somebody to, to clean it, even though we cleaned it ourselves, so.
And we have kind of glossed over the security issue, which.
Right.
I mean, I don't, uh, we shouldn't, because I do know that the security of the schools is something that everybody takes super seriously. Um, and, you know, they have to, they can't keep the buildings open, so they have to, they have to stay locked, which means they can't.
And it's, they're, they're the ones that are, that are opening up their facility to this, you know, so there's a lot that's involved in it. You know, uh, of, of the, you know, the Color Guard competitions that I've gone to. There are certain classrooms they can go into, they have monitors on each hall to make sure that nobody goes in any other place, so there's a lot of staff just to have. You know, what we would consider a simple function.
And the problem is, if something goes sideways, the schools are the ones who are gonna. They could feel the heat, not us for putting something in the lease that.
Okay.
Uh, so I.
Can.
My problem is that I agree with everything that you're saying, that we, that, that they ought to charge reasonable rates, I also think that that's something that like. We should send a letter to the school board to have them bring it up as a motion to instruct the administration. As a Board of Selectmen, say Townsend requests, you know, that we've had complaints about the rates that the school is charging and we were. We would respectfully request that you, that the school committee review the rates and, and try to charge reasonable rates so that, you know, town. You know, town organizations can go there.
And if it's on there, the school committee, then the townspeople would then be able to speak to that issue.
Yeah, that, but that might be, I, I, do you see what I'm saying, like, is it, it, it might be more appropriate than in the lease, but.
So, let me just ask a pickup basketball question. Um, can you go play pickup basketball on the, um? On the, uh.
Outside?
Side?
At the, at. I mean, at Spalden?
It's used to be, but I don't.
I have seen people do it.
On the weekend, I don't know.
I've seen people do it in the afternoons, after school's out.
Here, in town?
Yeah.
Let me ask a chat about the recreation. They use you at the school?
Um, to my knowledge, they have not had one, um, but I do know that.
But that wouldn't some be covered under this, we're only talking the summer program.
Right, they had, they had some agreement, um, which I think we're trying to. There was a certain fee that they paid, which had the summer program and a couple of dances per year.
Right.
But I don't think they're doing the dances, so I'm not sure.
What about this as a kind of an interim? Instead of saying recreation summer program, we say recreation program, and if the recreation department decides it wants to have a. A, a pickleball game. Right? For, I'm getting current, I'm getting, I'm getting current.
Said that with a straight face and that scared me.
Well, it's very popular right now. Uh, or have a dance or something, then we're covered, if they wanna do something for a senior pickup basketball game and see how it works. To expand what they have in the recreation, instead of eliminate to the summer program, say. Limit, you know, to things the recreation one apartment wants to do.
We haven't submitted this yet, right?
This is not.
We can submit it and they're gonna come back.
Gotta go to town.
But I'm saying. To, I just say, instead of recreation summer program, say recreation program.
I mean, w- w- we could put it at. We could put in something about, you know, other town, you know, you, the, the town shall have the right to use the facility. If the school department isn't using it for other.
I think, if we're gonna put in what Teresa is suggesting, I would want to put it as a separate number.
Yeah, but I wanna leave this, I wanna leave the rec.
I wanna keep the Townsend Summer Rec Program specifically called out.
Yeah, I would not wanna change that, but Emmy and I worked through, Emmy gave me really great language to put in there about what they specifically need, and I wanna make sure that we.
Amenable to adding a separate one that says, um. You know, uh, recreation programs, um. Will be given, uh, through Townsend Recreation, you know, programs. And, you know, Townsend Recreation doesn't have to be just kids, I mean, it could be pickup basketball, hear that Emmy? I mean, but if there were a demand for something like that, so if. So this is something that might, you know, put in a number ten or whatever, you know, put it in there as seven and a half.
So do we have to submit this? To them and then they come back with what they want and then we go back and forth and then we put it on the town meeting?
Well, no, so the town meeting is, the Town Meeting Warren article does not, is not say the lease had to look like this. The Town Meeting Warren article says, you're authorizing the town to enter into a lease, and there, we're gonna be a draft lease that says. You know, this is just a draft.
So I agree, let's just put it in and see what they say.
And, and put in towns, uh, recreation programs, Townsend, um. Recreation programs, um, uh, reserves the right to negotiate for. Space at reasonable rates or. What's reasonable?
I was about to say, the word reasonable as an attorney pushes my buttons, cause like that, just you have to ask them to litigate it.
Well, I'd wanna start with anything that the rec department's doing in the school should be free. Start there and then, like, they come back.
Okay, well, we can start then.
If they come back and they know.
Really, the, the other possibility is at the, at the, at. At the school district's actual documented cost. So if you have to pay a janitor to come in that wasn't coming in, and you can show us.
Yeah, that, that would be, I would be okay.
But maybe that's the fallback position after, for free.
Townsend Rec, and it was pickup basketball, and you had. You know, some rec leader, you know, doing it, and people were paying fees, I would assume, to do that, it wouldn't, maybe not necessarily be free, but. Five bucks or whatever, you know, um.
Usually ten.
Okay, ten, whatever, that's reasonable.
Words and growth, but needed the money.
So, yeah, I think the days of free are almost over, um, but. Language of that.
So how about this, I will do that, you guys have seen this, I'll, I'll make that tweak. Um, and then maybe unofficially let you guys see the, the language and if nobody has any objection, that, then the new language will be what we put on the town meeting, I'm good with that.
All right, so.
We, we do have folks here for number four point eight.
Four point eight.
So do we wanna, I'm sorry, I should, we should probably should have. Um. It's talking about a very similar issue.
Done with this, the Spalding School Lease?
Yeah.
I said my two cents.
All right, and we don't need any vote on this, we.
No, but.
We have consensus and we have to do.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah.
Okay.
There's a whole back and forth.
Let's, uh, so let's take four point eight out of the order, because this is sort of related. Um, so we'll take that before four point five. I discuss the school department policy regarding not allowing distribution of town information. Flyers, email attachments, et cetera. When you say town information, are you talking about? Municipal information, or are you talking about? General town information? Pardon me?
Municipal, I believe is the issue, but Emmy is here specifically for this, so.
Okay, so should we let Emmy talk first? Emmy, are you muted, unmuted?
I'm unmuted now, so, um, Karen's actually here as well, um, initially came through.
I was gonna ask you guys if you have a camera to please turn on your camera.
Oh, hold on, sorry about that, give me a second. All right, you got me?
I mean, yeah, Karen, same with you.
Thanks, we had to get it in before the rain started.
All right.
Okay, so. Yeah, I don't wanna, um. I don't wanna speak out of turn, let me pull up what I have. Um, so I heard initially from. Um, Karen Clement, um. About this initially, because they were looking to do some flyers for the holiday fair at the library. Which is a town function. Karen Clement.
Of the library, yeah.
Friends of the library, right, um, their holiday fair, and the response back, um, from the school district. Was that we are now unable to distribute the information to our schools, they are only. Currently only approving school-based information to avoid families missing essential information from the district. Um, as a district, we have moved away from flyers and utilize social media platforms for announcements, so perhaps your organization could also utilize social media. While there are many worthy organizations, nonprofit and otherwise, our focus is on educating students. So it sounds, so Karen brought this to me, um, because obviously as a recreation department, we don't, we do flyers. As well as, um, we get approval for the flyers so that they can go as attachments, um, in emails, as do. Many, and I'm not gonna just say municipal, because it's not just municipal, I would say this is a community. Issue as well as municipal issue, if they are only doing school, that means that they have literally cut off. All of the outside activities for the students and their families as a community within the district. So, um. We said, this, I haven't had any direct conversation about this as of yet, I don't have anything to go to the schools currently. Although I'm supposed to be getting the home ec ones. For January going through soon, um, seventh to tenth graders. And I will say that, you know, Fitchburg, Leominster, Shirley, and Air are more than happy to send those through their information. To their schools for our programs, um, just saying.
Did the school district send your information earlier this year?
Um, yeah, they sent it through for the beginning home ec class, um, I put it through at the high school, um. Because again, it's, and middle school, seventh through tenth, so basically I just send it over, um, as an attachment. Because again, paper flyers, especially since COVID, they haven't really wanted to do that in a whole, like, massive amount, and, um, they have gotten away from paper and quite a. Quite a bit, although we have done them, especially for the younger grades, um, having paper go home is actually much more helpful. Um, and like I said, the big concern about this is that. You know, we do, and other programs, and again, I'm, I'm gonna, obviously, I'm representing Townsend Recreation, a department of the town. And other programs, and again, I'm, I'm gonna, obviously I'm representing Townsend Recreation, a department of the town, um. But we. Although we use social media. Half of my parents aren't on either Facebook or Instagram. Or vice versa, they're not sitting on their phones looking for these sort of things, that's not the way a community works. The schools. Tend to be the hub. Of a town. That's just, I mean, half of our populace. Is going there or is related to somebody that is there. Schools tend to be the hub, it's just, yes, we are educating our students, but it's a hub of the community and not. You know, I've been with rec what, ten years now and. To hear that the schools are now just like, hey, we don't want to, we're not going to. Put through anything that comes from anything other than school. Is. That's disconcerting. It's disconcerting, it's disconcerting for me, um, as I said, Karen sent this, it's extremely disconcerting on their end, again, library. Um, senior center. Us as a department, um. Again, what if we wanna have pickup basketball? You know? You know, like, we've been doing flyers through the school my entire time and I know the, that, um. It was done before me, uh, and we adapted when it became an email attachment issue or like the high school. Has been wonderful, they actually would put our, um, they put our stuff up for the high school kids up on their reader boards. I don't know exactly what they're called, but they have the, the monitor system. Um, and they would put our information up on that, which has been really helpful. Um, I mean, heck, these are, I'm offering home at classes that the school doesn't offer anymore.
It hasn't been an issue for Townsend Rec.
Not yet, I haven't, I haven't put in any new flyers recently, um, but it was brought to me because again, the email that came back. Said very clearly, the district is currently only approving school-based information. And it says. It says, while there are many worthy organizations, nonprofit and otherwise, our focus is on educating students. So, I mean, it, it, it doesn't say. You know, with the exception of, or only entities that aren't part of. The district towns departments, it says everybody, basically. So. I, I mean, I don't know where it goes from there, and again, I, Karen had made mention.
Emmy, who, who sent that?
So that came from Robin. IB, who's the executive assistant. To the superintendent. Yes, from the superintendent. Correct.
Emily, when you're talking about a flyer, you're talking about what I remember forty something, I don't know. Where there would be a piece of paper that came home and the kids.
Sometimes, and that's. Right, no, um, sometimes it is paper because they are hard copy registrations for things. You know, like we'll send through and then that puts another question, so the entities that are leasing that are not part of the schools. That are leasing space. Um, at the schools outside of being a part of the district. Do they no longer, they're no longer able to do that either, like I'm just, it. Again, it sounds like we're. It sounds like, personal opinion here, I'm not gonna malign anybody, it sounds like they're saying unless it is coming from our school. You're out. That's what it sounds like to me, that was the impression.
We have, um, we have the friends of the library that fall into this category.
Absolutely.
Do a lot for this community in regards to, um, uh, uh, not only raising money for the library. But educating our children or providing the tools for our children to be educated. They're being denied access to be able to send things to, to the children.
And how about contests that our kids do? And our families do.
Which is very important for, for us, and I agree with you, a community, this is the community issue, this is. Actually, it's a social problem that they're creating by, by cutting off. An information stream from, from the municipality, who is probably, um, sixty, uh, sixty percent of their budget. Comes from the town. Or sixty percent of our budget comes from. I, I, I think we need to, to talk with the superintendent or.
I think we need to talk to the school.
Um, Karen did make mention.
To confirm that it is actually the policy.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I didn't see anything, I read the last couple of minutes, I have been trying to keep up the minutes and I don't. See anything for the, remember seeing anything recently. And it appears this is something coming out new. And I know for my time on the school committee, any policy change has to come before the school committee. There has to be a policy change, you have to go. And you have to go for public hearing, policy change, the whole bet.
So I think it's a matter of confirming that it is a policy, speaking with the school committee because they're the ones that would, um. Would work with the superintendent. To change things, because I agree, the commu, it is the hub of the community, so.
If it truly is a policy, I'd like to see where it was advertised, that it was on the agenda to. A, a policy change to, uh, communication to the, uh, uh, students.
Madam Chair, if I may? Since we're talking, you're talking about the school committee, again, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I do have. Information here and I don't, I know that Karen can hear, but I don't know technology-wise where she is on this, but. Um, she actually wrote to all of the school committee members. And not one of them wrote back, is what I've received as of today. Um, so she has actually reached out to the school committee herself as, again, a representative of, um. Friends of the library or the library or trustees, um, for this. And the school committee itself as a member, um, a community member and did not receive. Anything back as of yet, so again, I think that it's important that the BOS, yeah. We find out what's actually happening with this and if the school committee is. Addressing this or if this is just coming through the admin's office to start current.
So Emmy, can I ask you to forward me that email?
My pleasure.
So in there, you'll check on the status.
I will follow up both with the, with the, a member of the school committee that I can get a hold of. And, um, with the superintendent's office and try to figure out.
With the deal is.
Can we put this on our next agenda?
Or under the, um, TA updates.
The North Middlesex Regional Policy, um, manual is online, so we could research there too and see if there's anything there.
But that's, it sounds like it's a change in. The way things happen, right?
The letter specifically would use the word policy. You don't, can, in my opinion, you can't send a letter saying a policy if it's. A whim.
Sometimes, at least what I've seen.
It doesn't say policy.
It does not say policy.
No, it just says the district is currently. I did. Yeah, I just sent it to him.
We'll come back to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
All right, thanks, Karen.
That was what I wanted to hear about. I know he's used other terms like, um. The school board that he has control over day to day. And that where instead of policy, I've been using that, but.
It's a little sad when. Your, your schools become separate from the rest of the community, so I really want that to happen. All right.
Back to our order, I apologize for.
That's all right, that was a. Four point five is for the twenty twenty-three calendar year holidays for the town. Um, and there was the, the list of Massachusetts legal holidays. I had one question, first of all, the one that is most imminent is. Uh, New Year's Day is January second, so. Where people will. So, so the thirty-first is not a holiday. But the second.
Yeah, thirty-first is on a Saturday, so.
Right, the thirtieth is not a holiday, right, so.
Following Monday, it's the previous Friday.
So, um, yeah. That's what I was trying to say.
All holidays falling on Sunday must be observed on Monday, yes, that's.
So my question came down to Veterans Day, which is on a Saturday. So I am assuming that's observed on Friday, November tenth. Is that, I mean.
Saturday holidays are served on Saturday.
So there is no day off for employees. For Veterans Day. Is that what we're saying? That's what I didn't know. So when I say observed, I mean, that's the holiday you get off. If, if Veterans Day is on Saturday, then that would not be a day off. If in fact. Or is it on the tenth?
It's generally speaking, it's on the tenth, most, most places. Is the day off you get is the.
Would you look at the union rules on that?
I think you, because we, we, that's a sticky thing. But if it's listed as a holiday, Veterans Day.
And it's on a Saturday. Um, which means that. Saturday, and that's what happened with Juneteenth, the first year that it was a. Federal holiday or whatever, i- in Massachusetts, you could choose whether to observe or not. But the holiday itself was on the Saturday and therefore no day off was necessary. Necessarily given, uh, unless. The town was not unanimous, um, so.
A double check.
Now, isn't, there's also some. Isn't there some unions that are, they have the option of taking that off and putting it on the Friday, Thanksgiving?
So, yeah, so it's not unions, it's people who are non-union voice.
Right.
Of the town. That don't get the Friday after Thanksgiving off can opt to work on Veterans Day. The Veterans Day holiday.
Friday, so there's that, there's that too, that complicating.
So I had written down that the holiday was Friday, November tenth, but I think we need to look at all our various union contracts. And personnel policies and procedures that are all. Like that, should be like this, but are not. Um, and figure out what we're doing with that thing. Because you can't tell people work on Veterans Day. When it's a Saturday to get off on.
Yes.
The Friday after Thanksgiving, you can't do that.
Right.
You have to give them day off that they actually have off.
Yes.
So anyway. So that was my only question and, and, and it was a surprise to me that the Monday, so the next. Board of Selectment meeting that we have. Will need to be posted.
By Thursday.
Not by Thursday, by Wednesday. I said Thursday.
It's just like any other Monday holiday.
Right. Okay, thank you. All right, so that, those are the holidays for the year. So we should get those out, I guess, ten things. Once we clarify.
We need to vote on that or no?
Uh, sure, let's vote. No, we can't vote, because we don't know what to do about Veterans Day, but we could put a caveat in there that we will go with whatever Eric decides.
I make a motion that we have Eric. Look at the holidays for, um, January, um, my, excuse me, for two thousand and twenty-three. And come back to the board with, uh. After reviewing the contracts with what our options are for Veterans Day, which is on a Saturday.
But except all the other holidays.
But except all the other holidays.
Second.
All those in favor?
Tuesday and Wednesday, yes.
Cast six and New Year's.
So we're putting Veterans Day on you, Eric. All right. So the next, um. Uh, so moving on to four point six. These are the BOS meeting dates for January through June. Um, there, there are some of them, actually, we do have a meeting during school vacation week in February. And a meeting during school vacation week in April. So it's, uh, President's Day week and. Um, Patriots Day week. Um, and I didn't know whether that was okay for people or not.
Can you tell me the dates for March, please?
Um, March seventh and March twenty-first, the first and third Tuesday. So I went with the first and third Tuesday everywhere. Uh, pretty much. In May, the first Tuesday is the annual town meeting. Um, so the third Tuesday is May sixteen. But, but in February and April, it falls out during the school vacation. So I, I didn't know if that was an issue.
It's not an issue for me, Madam Chair.
So, okay. For you, Eric, it's okay.
I don't, it's not an issue, my social secretary has not informed me of everything for twenty twenty-three, but it's not an issue at this time.
And then I also noted the months where there was a fifth Tuesday. So if something needed to be added or moved or whatever. I guess it's January and May have the Tuesdays. Yep, so.
Much-needed executive sessions that we may need, right? Yes.
So are we good with, in general, I don't know that we have to vote on this, but I just thought people should. That we need to vote on this? It should have some idea, it's nice to know.
I appreciate you, you've been in this for us.
So, and after change, girl.
I was expecting that comment too.
So anyway, all right, so those are the meeting dates. Uh, okay, the next one is the digital equity plan. So it's in the SharePoint. Um, this is something that's coming out through our funding through the state. Um, and I attended MRPC's presentation on this last week, Thursday, I guess it was. And, um, the, it was Karen Chapman that made the presentation along with four other MRPC planners. The state is trying to have every town, um, have a digital equity plan. So it's to look at, um. Do all the students in the district have access to both internet and. Um, equipment? Do the people in the towns have access to internet service and equipment? Do, um, where are there gaps? What about underserved populations, which for us is pretty much senior population? Um, and, um, what was the other thing? Um, to look at speeds. Internet speeds to see if what's being delivered within the service area is adequate. Um, for anything that may happen in the future that would require us all to be in our homes. Still communicate. So what they're doing is, there is, and it's a really easy grant application. And MRPC will be happy to provide us the data for, I think there are three questings in the application, I don't know if you guys looked at it, but it's. Pretty quick application. They would provide us with any data that we needed to fill out the application. It's first come, first served. Um, so the idea is to make a digital equity plan, that's what the funding is for. There will later be opportunities to implement the plan. But right now, you will, you do that quick application to say, yeah, we wanna do digital equity plan. And if you are, if you receive the grant for that. They provide you with a list of providers that can. Provide you with the plan, work on the plan, or the community can decide if they have the resources in-house. To do it themselves, you know, take the. Take the funds from the grant and then do it yourself, which I don't think we're in the position to do. So I would recommend.
Oh, yeah.
We pull one of their providers and MRPC is one of their providers. They also mentioned, and it was in the email that I sent to you guys that got sent out after. That if you're a regional school district, you partner with the other two towns to do it all together. So that they can look at the school district population. Well, of course, being Townsend's and having a, um, three school. Three towns in the district, one of which is not in the same planning agency as us. I asked them. Okay, so. If, um, we were to do it jointly, like approach Ashby and Preppel, because they're on regional district. Um, MRPC said that they. Um, M R P C said that they would be able to work with Yimco. In providing a plan for all three towns that included the district and the towns individually, and they would work out how.
So what do we need to do to move forward with that?
We need to fill out the application for the grant. So what we need. I'm, I'm assuming you've had time to review what.
There's a vote to apply for the grant.
The vote is to apply for the grant. So that's what I made the motion for.
Yeah, I made a motion that we apply for the di- digital access grant.
I second that.
The digital equity.
Oh, equity, I'm sorry. Equity grant, okay.
Um, any further discussion?
I just, I was a little confused. How are they defining access? That's why I said it in my moment.
Um, do you have Wi-Fi service in your homes?
In your home, is that?
Um, yes, um, they said, there is a, and we advertised it about a year ago. There's a plan, you can get free if you can't afford. There is a program that I can't think of the name of.
Broadband and some. Broad, yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, it's that. Um.
Equity or something.
And they said not a lot of people are taking advantage of that. So part of this would make people aware of that. So that if you weren't able to afford the access, you could get it.
Right, if we had a plan, then we would be able to to approach the individuals that may need it.
Right.
The, the, the outreach is, I think.
If, if, there is a big outreach, um, part to the, to the plan that is created as a result of obtaining the grants, yeah. And then it's to see even, it will, so you do have access, but do you have the equipment thing? Are the speeds in general in the town adequate? For, anyway, it's all right.
Yeah.
So.
Because they need, they need to be able to, they're gonna, uh, with the next step of this is they're gonna be rolling out. You know, enhanced fiber and, 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 and opportunities to provide people with low-cost, you know, computers. And they want to be able to have a way to say, oh. This part of Townsend needs fiber, so let's just.
Or, or this demographic in Townsend, or this, you know, population or whatever it is. So, um.
Teresa A. Morris, yes?
Jess, six, and Durianian, yes?
And for I could tell, yes, I don't even have to ask the question. So, alright, so, um. Do you wanna apply for that, or do you want?
Well, I, I think it's on my plate to reach out to the other towns.
Yes, to see if.
And so we're gonna apply jointly.
Yeah.
And so that's what.
Does make sense.
It does, it does.
So.
So I'll reach out to Andrew and Christine and, and, um.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and try to get them on board as well.
And I think this just rolled out earlier this month. I don't think it's been out that long. So.
Okay.
Um, alright, so that's. Four point seven. Uh, five point O, Arpa projects. Um. I'll tell you what, let's come back to that during the ASON reports. And let's go to town administrator updates and reports. Is that okay?
Sure.
Alright.
Um, so I only had a couple. Um. Um, the first is, um. At the last meeting, uh, of the board, um, there was a vote taken authorizing me to, um, sign an energy agreement. Um. Uh, for three years, so long as it came in as less than sixteen cents. Um, and I wanted to get the board to authorize me to sign a three-year, uh, energy agreement at slightly more than that, sixteen point two three one cents. Um. Um. Uh, I think it's a good idea, and it will save the town a lot of money this winter over the, the alternative of the one-year rate, which is way closer to the G two rates than.
Which is twenty-two. Twenty-one.
Future rates twenty-one, and the, and the one-year rate from the, from a private source was, I think our best one we got was like nineteen-seven. So it was like a little more than that one penny difference, which is not huge. The sixteen, I think, is a much more competitive rate, so. Um, I'm hoping that we can afford to authorize me to sign it sixteen point two three one.
So is there a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize the signing of the contract for three years at the, what, sixteen point two three cents.
Second.
All this and things, Teresa A. Morris, yes?
Jess, six, and Durianian, yes?
And Grant, the others.
And then the second thing I wanted to bring up is, um. Uh, I know that, um. In the time that I've been here, there's been a lot of discussion about, um, um. What to do with some town properties that were not in great shape. Uh, the old library, uh, the old downtown fire station, and the old harbor fire station are three that come to mind. And so what I'd like to do is get the Board of Selectmen's approval to, um, uh, start, um, you know, working with, um, uh, staff here and, and potentially with M R P C to do, um, put together some community outreach as to what the town might want to do with those properties. I have a lot of, I, I have some ideas about whether it's commercial space, resident, you know, mixed-use residential, commercial, artist lofts, like the, you know, a, a museum, you know. A coffee shop, you know, I think there are lots.
Farmer's market.
There are lots of different possibilities that we could do with these properties. Um, and I think that the first step in the process is for us to to kind of reach out to the town and get, take, kind of take the temperature of, of the townsfolk as to what they think would be good ideas. Um, the ultimate goal would be to, you know, uh, to, to come up with a plan and either, you know, funding it ourselves through grants or reaching out to developers, um, um, or a combination of both, to try to figure out how to effectuate kind of the goals that the town would have for these properties. Um, so I'm just kind of looking for an okay for the Board of Selectmen to start the, kind of the, the process of um, checking to see what the town might wanna, how they feel about, you know, adaptive reuse of these properties.
That's great, I think. I'll make a motion that we direct Eric to take a look at some of the town older properties and see how we could possibly reuse them for the betterment of the town. And I want to add to that and gain input from the general public. On their, their ideas. On the use of those buildings.
Hallelujah, second.
I do wanna bring up, I just asked a question, like certain things like the old, the harvest station and the old library, my understanding, where those were like basically extremely cost prohibitive to get to A D A standards. So that's why they're kind of sitting there. So are you thinking something differently? Am I missing something or?
Well, I think the, the economics of reuse of buildings changes, and especially if you're looking at something that might have a housing component, because the cost of housing, every time that goes up, it makes it that much more affordable to to, to retrofit something to be A D A compliant. You're, you're not wrong, um, um, that that's a challenge that someone would have to look into. Right, and there, there also is something that should have been done many years ago. There should have been, um, uh, A D A surveys, there should have been a lot of um. Planning being done up until now. So it's like we're kind of behind the eight ball and.
And I, I, I thought that was done though, so then, okay, okay.
We were supposed to have an A D A survey or whatever it was. When was it? Three years ago, four years ago? I can't remember when it was. Like a transition plan in.
We've, we've applied two years in a row. We did no.
Right.
Um, and we were rejected. M R P C did the grant applications last.
Mm.
Um, and.
So wasn't enough planning, I think that's.
I think.
They have a planning grant, but I think that the goal would be before the next application round, which I think opens up next August. For us to reach out to the Massachusetts Office on Disability and find out what was lacking about our prior applications while we got skipped over. And just get some kind of honesty back as to what they're looking for, and, and, I mean.
Part of it is that, um, we have, and it's in our charter, uh, Commission on Disabilities, which has never been seated.
And that's a challenge.
And, um, and although, I know we had put out through the senior center, um, I think it's posted on the bulletin board, so we have never gotten a single application for that. So I think that, um, apathy in the town can also be a deterrent to getting a plan done.
And they may be, it may be that simple, that they say, you don't have a commission. We're gonna give money to people that actually have a commission that are gonna move.
Yeah, well, I did, after the first one was, um, turned, turned away.
Mm-hmm.
We did have a review with the, um, whoever.
M O D.
Authority is. And one of the things was you need to see your Commission on Disability.
Yeah, so it's.
And so we attempted that. Um, but the attempt wasn't enough. I included the things that went out in the senior center flyer, the postings that were on the website, et cetera.
Yeah.
In the second round, but we didn't have actual people.
Yeah.
In those positions.
So I'm one hundred percent in, in getting, in gaining input from the town to find out what their thoughts are. I think that's a fabulous idea and the fact that we are, we are looking to do something with it because I think time is of the essence. We need to start moving on this.
They are, they are.
Yeah, they're not, they're not staying in the same state. Having, having said that, um, I'm gonna take this opportunity to again say that I really would like to see a maintenance report for each one of the town buildings that you just mentioned. Um, that if that's part of the facilities department, then I would like to see, um, what has been done and what is needed in those buildings.
And I would like to see that as part of the capital plan, and I would like to add facilities as a reporter for the capital plan, because that's the perfect place to see the five years. And when I was on capital planning four years ago or whatever it was, facilities was not one of the, um. And, you know, we heard from some tearing parks, highway, police, fire, water, but we didn't want it from facilities.
Mm-hmm.
And that's kind of where that fits.
Yep.
Because you, you might not write up a maintenance plan, but the simple fact of saying, we're gonna need to replace the heater in this year, the windows in this, paint the building in this year, whatever it is.
Instead of hearing, I need twenty thousand dollars to fix a roof or something like that, which is something that we haven't planned for.
I mean, there are emergencies that come up, but it would be nice to kind of be able to plan for them.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, alright, so, uh, we have a motion on the floor for, um.
I just, I'm sorry.
To go forward.
Question before I vote.
Yeah.
Uh, is, in your, reaching out to the community, are you looking for ways to keep these properties as, um, being owned by the town of Townsend, or are you looking beyond that scope?
Uh, personally, I, it would definitely be beyond that scope. It doesn't mean that that's the entire possibility, but I mean, I think if you could turn any of those properties into tax-generating properties, that would.
I, I would, if it is no longer owned by the town, I would want to know that it was gonna be checked out. Um, that's all.
Right, but I'd like to, I'm thinking along the same lines as you, if somebody wants to come in and make apartments or something that's gonna, you know.
I have a, I, I have a very naive dream of having artist live-work studios in some of these buildings. That draw, that draw some people into the downtown.
The nuts and berries from, uh.
Yeah, or yes, or, you know, uh, you know, uh.
Okay.
Teresa A. Morris, yes?
Well, I just want to see them fixed. I don't want the history. This isn't important for me, and it's also important for those that I hang around with that are very, um, active in keeping the historic value of this town. Those buildings are historic and that's, that's the part of the town, you know, as far as who's living in it. Uh, I don't care, but I, I want the heart library to always be the heart library, yeah.
I'm ready.
Alright.
Teresa A. Morris, yes?
Jess, six, and Durianian, yes?
And for I could tell. Do you have anything else?
Oh, you don't.
Well, I have a few things. So this has been.
Were you, that was gonna say.
Like a pump quiz.
Yeah.
Um. So, uh, capital planning, um, we need appointments that should be on the January third meeting.
Yes.
Then. Uh, we, we will need a representative from the Board of Selectmen. Uh, we need a representative from the planning board and a representative from the, I think they've already known.
Yeah, they've already made that vote, so they were.
Um, so we are going to need to, so think about it, the guys. Uh, for capital planning, I could do it too, because it's a short-term appointment. The appointments are through June thirtieth of the year. Um. And we need four at-large, when it's by the modern.
I just have to reach out to John about that.
And we should probably notify these facilities, highly, you know, all of the department heads that they need to get their cap- capital plan together, because we're probably gonna wanna see it roughly mid-January. Um, because I can see that these meetings are gonna be happening straight away.
Yeah.
After the holidays. People might wanna. You know. That's all. Okay, next one. Charter status, do we know?
I don't know anything since the last time we discussed it, which was I, the, the person who's in charge of it came to see me around the time when.
During the elections.
Around the time, yeah, around early, it was, it was actually before that, because it was during, um, during, um, uh, pre-election, pre-election, they walked him out, um. And, uh, said that uh, he still hoped that it would happen in this session, but he didn't have any other information for us. You know, and as I mentioned to, to you, I think, Madam Chair, I, I, I think that once we get a rep that covers towns, I like the, the, the gap of not having a rep to kind of carry the water for this in the house
Yeah.
is, is a, a real, is a real problem. So once this race gets decided and that person, you know, gets chosen, we, we can reach out to their staff and, um, and, and kind of really hammer that this is super important and needs to be done first thing in twenty twenty-three. Um. But that, I think that's, you know, uh, uh, until then, I've called the Senator, Senator Cronin's office about it. So, um. He's aware.
Right. Number three. Um, I would like to add an executive session. We've been really, really, you know, not good with executive sessions for many months. We haven't had one.
That's actually usually good.
But what I would like, maybe the January seventeenth meeting, if everybody agrees, is an executive session to review the, um, court cases.
Outstanding litigation.
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, so would January seventeenth seem reasonable, or should we go after February?
No, I mean, it's just a matter of getting an update from the attorneys. I think for a couple of, a couple of the outstanding cases, I already know the status. Um.
Okay.
And I, I, there had, as far as I know, there hasn't been any significant movement since the last time I talked to, to Insurance Council about that, but yeah, I think this is.
That would be great, so. January seventeenth executive session, so just so everybody's aware that that's gonna be on the agenda. Those are my things then.
We had enough of those this year. I don't mind next year. That's why we're kicking it off to Jay.
Like they start the executive sessions, it's wonderful.
It's a great, great thing. The less of those, the better.
Okay, reports from Board of the ASON. Unless somebody else has something for Eric, does anybody else have anything for Eric? Before we move on, I had my list.
I brought it into his office before we started tonight, so I'm good.
Good, okay.
So I met with the Energy Committee. They're going over a lot of different things they're, they're working on. Um, the only thing that they asked me to bring back to the board, um, they said they had requested a, a posting because they had lost a member and.
Oh, that is correct, and I thought we did vote for that.
We voted on.
Yeah, we voted on it. So they wanted to know, and I said, no, I'm pretty sure I remember voting on that. Where do they see that posting?
Uh, it should be on the, um, website under jobs and volunteering, so it's one of those bullets going across, and it would be on the bulletin board downstairs.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Well, and that's all I got. Um, elected boards.
Um, as we heard tonight, it'll be water is next Monday, um, and since it's the beginning of the month, I'm, I don't have anything.
Okay, so public safety, I actually have a couple of them. Um, I've heard a lot from. Um, I've heard a lot from the building department, so I I guess I'm just gonna mention ways so that. It's out there, um. Uh, uh, the the light bylaw. Um. I I think that uh, to get everybody into compliance, it would be nice if the. Building Department encouraged. Um. The places that need to. Do do it to come up with a plan to do it, and I I think you've done that.
Yeah, we talked about that.
The purpose of that bylaw, just to have something on record, is to direct light downward. It's not intended to make things unsafe. It just means that if you fly out of Northern Massachusetts. Townsend isn't the big white ball. Shining in the sky, so it's to. To um, direct the light down. And um, apparent, I heard that apparently there was a misunderstanding that we're asking people to remove lights, which we are not. We're just asking the the bylaw.
Adhere to.
That's all. And that does not mean making parking spaces unsafe. It just means directing the light down, not into the sky.
You can't, if the light isn't set up to not have it, and this was also discussed at the meeting. You have to have it set up in a way that it doesn't have what they call escaping rooms, like you said, the light doesn't go up. The light goes down. If you have a something on your house, a sconce or something. There's no light bulb you can put in there that's not gonna go up. You have to buy a different type of thing.
Or put a shield.
Or something to keep it from being in the escaping room.
So, but but the idea is to make us not be the the bright light uh, in the sky.
The complaints are not coming from residential people, they're coming from commercial people who have large lots that have non-compliant lighting. And that. They're concerned that taking the lights that are like this and turning like this is creating dark spots, because I think that it's came from someone who actually just went out and did it. Without checking to see if that made us. And so I think that my conversation with the person who came in. And and which is right in line with the building commissioner is. If you have to come up with a plan. To make your parking lot safe, do it, and you can have time to do that before you adjust the lighting.
Right.
And so the building commissioner is totally on board with that. That's how it's treating this.
And the people on the Energy Committee are very knowledgeable about this. They know the lights that are out there, the lights that work, they're low. And and you know, I don't know how. Parking lot that's covered with light. Down is less protected than a parking lot that's covered with the lights up, so I'm missing something.
If you have lighting that's at a forty-five degree angle, that's a violation of the of the ordinance. But it provide, it it illuminates a more more ground space than if you have lighting in a, at a, you know, ninety degree.
There's, it is.
It it is not there. That's why they were asking about it. The um.
I'm sorry, what?
The Energy Committee. Posting apparently is not up, so.
The vacancy is not posted on them.
Oh, it's not, okay.
So I think that would be nice to me when they were just asking it, where where is it posted?
So there was that, um.
So there was that.
The light bylaw, and the other one was um, the trees along Pessent Bridge. Apparently in the windstorm. Uh, did you hear about this? Okay, so um. The town accepted the property that's right along Pessent Bridge Road, the entryway to Pessent Bridge.
Okay.
And apparently in the windstorm, there were a couple.
Our new trees.
That leaned, I I drove out there, I guess it was Friday or Saturday. And there are, there are two leaning trees. And, you know, looking at it now, there could probably be some cleanup done. Um, so there was concern from residents of Pessent Bridge that it was dangerous. And that property is kind of in flux, but should be transferred in the its, in its entirety to the town by December thirty first.
Oh, so it's not ours now?
Well, it was voted by both the land trust and the town meeting. To accept the property. But and I.
But we haven't exchanged deeds.
Said the deeds haven't, I know there are. Um, and so it's just a matter of.
Can we have the uh, tree warden look at it?
That's what I was wondering, if Don Suko could just take a look at one.
Tree warden will look at size of the bridge.
Just right along the entryway. Not on the side that has the sidewalk, but the other side. So it's the south side of the street. Um. That, that needs work there.
Okay.
That's a small parcel, but it is all along the. Um. That's all I have. So.
Can I ask? About the um, is there negotiations for? Um, public safety?
Uh, in process.
In process.
Yeah, for for police, police contract, yeah, we're in process. I think the next meeting is in January. Uh, I can't remember the dates.
It is, I said to you, I remember to send it out now, local style.
Yeah. Saw it today when I. Um.
Yeah, the kind of the holidays.
I I don't think it's the first week. I think it's the second week on Wednesday or some such thing. So. Um, so they're in process.
Good.
Uh. Anything else? So that's all I have. Uh. Those are the ways I would, so are the projects? No, I don't think we have to go over that right now. Um, we should look at the. Um, because we accepted the bid for Greenville Road. And it was, at what point do we redirect? Any remaining funds? Shouldn't we wait until after the bridge is done? In case there's a contingency, I don't know if a contingency is.
I don't think a contingency is included in the, that's required to be included in the bid price. Um, I think it would. I. We probably need to wait.
Okay.
To see how it looks.
Okay.
Before we. Should look at anything extra.
I, okay, that sounds good. So that takes us down to five point three. Uh, Comcast Communications, et cetera. Um, so I, there are some things that were added to this, um. Comcast pricing changes are going up at the end of this month. For both general and the uh. Local sports network, I guess. So people should have gotten that in their bills. We received an announcement about that. Um, Concom legal notice, um, there is a. Con- Constitution Commission um, hearing next week. Wednesday, December fourteenth at eight P M. On the notice of intent. By Aaron and Wendy Williams. Um. For uh, construction of an addition to an existing single family home. Um. A part of the construction will take place within a riverfront area. And portions of the filling grading are within a hundred feet. Of the bordering vegetated wetland. Um, there is also a. A hearing next week for the um, C R, the, well, no, the um, maintenance. At Scone Aquipot, not the C R. Uh, yet. So um, just so people are aware of that. I'm on P C Public Outreach Survey. I believe this is the transportation survey. Um, if this hasn't gone up on the website already, I think it would be good if it did. So if we could ask Harrison. To put that on the website so she could. Answer that, they should get really used to surveys and this is a good way to get them wound up.
Come on to our surveys. Every week we'll have a new survey.
This is for the regional transportation plan. And um, I know that we are. We, the transportation, ah, transportation group that we put together are. Meeting to, um. This is not part of this, but input from this could be helpful. For us. So we're looking at things like um. An additional ban for the council on aging, which I do think they got, didn't they?
I think they did.
Yes, I think they got it. Um. And uh. Also, a possibility of partnering with us. To the, which were in a minor segment. So we need that. Um, and then the next one is M V P. The next grant round is coming out. And so the quarterly newsletter is in there. And if we have a land use coordinator, I would say we should definitely be looking at this, the M V P plan and this. This might be something that the Energy Committee wants to look at if they are interested in expanding their horizons beyond. Green communities, which is the the Green Communities Grant is what.
Right.
Triggered the energy. But if we're looking. Beyond that, the M V P plan is a great place to look. And um. And this is a uh. Um, expression of interest for the F Y twenty-four. Um, action grants. So that might be. The deadline to submit the form for more detailed feedback is Friday, January twentieth. And the uh, final deadline to submit is February third, so maybe it's more for this year, a matter of looking at the plan. And figuring out where we want to go. And then actually find, especially given that we don't have a land use coordinator or a grant administrator in place. We were looking good. Few months ago, but. Not so much anymore, but the quarterly newsletters were. I don't know that there's anything we need to put on a future agenda around this. Um, so that's all I have under announcements and communications. Does anybody else have anything else?
I have a couple of things. You wanna go first?
No.
Okay. Um, the first thing tonight, um, there was a opioid awareness panel, um. In a free Narcan training that that uh, was occurring or is currently. Occurring in stove. Um, but as part of um. An opioid awareness panel for the state of Massachusetts, um, there was some staggering numbers that came out, and I just wanted to throw it out there. Um, there's three hundred overdose deaths in Millsex County in twenty twenty. Three hundred and sixty in twenty twenty-one, and right now we're well over that. Um, part of it is because of um. They they call it COVID-related illnesses, um, it falls under that category. We're trying to get it separated out. To be substance-related as opposed to COVID-related, um, because it really shouldn't be tattooed to anything else. Um, but uh, we do have plenty of resources within the town. If you are an individual that is affected by anyone with overdose, we have. Um, we have our community services coordinator, um. Um, that is more than glad to to point to any resources, and we do have um, the um. Uh, the new facility that that is on Main Street for that. Um, I just thought those were staggering numbers and I did wanna bring that to the attention of people. Um, the second thing I wanted to to really. I I was uh. Fortunate enough to be um, going to the Groton Hill Music Center, the new music center that was in Groton. Um, last weekend. And um, I just wanna say that it was really nice to be able to see such a a fabulous um. Building, um, an opportunity for our area to to bring in other people. Um, it was uh, it was quite an interesting evening for us. It hasn't officially opened and it was really to do sound checks and acoustic checks. And that kind of stuff. Um, but this facility is is beyond comprehension as far as um, if you've ever seen. Uh, uh. It it's gonna rival Tanglewood, it's gonna rival a lot of um, um, anything that that is in this part of the country. Um, I think it's an opportunity for us to kind of, uh, opportunity for the town itself. To say, we've got something knocking on our back door that's just down the road, not that far, that we really need to up our game. Uh, as far as providing some some opportunities for outside individuals to start. Um, coming to our uh, our facilities, whether it be restaurants or stores or whatever, um. To be able to to generate some some additional monies within that the community. Um, but uh, if anybody has any any time or, I mean, it it's, it was a wonderful experience and they're. Um, they're on the website, they have their own website to be able to see what the upcoming concerts are, but if you have an opportunity. I will say please go to the, just to see the facility itself was was quite phenomenal.
I think the website is grotonhill.org.
Yeah. Thank you, that's all I have.
I'm gonna redo this from last week only because I messed it up a little bit last week, but once again, I do wanna make sure everybody is aware. But we're getting a visit from the D A V National Service Officer. He'll be uh, December tenth at the North Middlesex, uh, chapter of D A V. Um, and will host a seminar. Uh, not only including filling out disability claims and follow individual assistance with the process of filling out the claim. Uh, but he'll be going over a lot of the changes, as significant changes that go in effect on January first. The event is occurring, uh, as I said, this Saturday, December tenth at the B F W Post six five thirty-eight. On uh, four ninety-one Main Street in Townsend. Uh, it starts at ten a, ten A M. Uh, and uh, all veterans regardless of where they are, are welcome to.
Alright, thank you. Um. Alright, then, um. The uh, next thing, uh, is our next meeting, which is special town meeting on Tuesday, December thirteenth. Um, it is uh. On the news, on the website, front page, and if you click on it, you can get to the warrant to see what the warrant articles are. Um, as we stated last week, if free cash is not certified by then, they. It's been in a little while now. If it's not certified by then, we won't pass over those articles. Go forward, so please come to Special Town Meeting, December thirteenth. The lighted signs should change, I think on Friday. To um, announce Special Town Meeting. I guess I should check with. You know, to make sure that that went in and that he has that. Did that go in? To change the lighted sign? I will look. I'm pretty sure you did that before, while I was away in November. Um. If not, we can switch that up. So that people are aware of that. Um, we, we, right now, uh, the December twentieth. Board of Selectment meeting is not happening. I mean, last week, today, next week, that's enough. We need, we need holidays. So uh. And I don't think there's anything pressing for that meeting right now. I don't have a single.
You know, it's the holidays, things are winding down, a little slower. Everything on January third. That will be.
Be here on the third or else.
So um. Yeah. Uh. So is there a motion to review and sign payroll and build payable warrants out of session, and this would be for every week? Between now and January third.
Make a motion that re-review and sign payroll. And build payable warrants out of session between now and. January third.
Second.
All those in favor?
Chad Sexton, Iranian, yes.
And I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at nine, uh, eight fifty.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Theresa Amor, yes.
But thank you, everybody, and hope to see you at Special Town Meeting next week.